This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Let me get this underway officially open the Zoom meeting for May 15th of the Southampton Planning Board. Members in attendance tonight, Mark Darnold, Stephen Johnson, and myself, Paul Demon. Not present are Paul Fergal and Dan Levalle. We only have one agenda item tonight outside of our committee reports, but we have an A and R submitted by Heritage Engineering surveys for the applicant information is Thomas and Jackie Sears of Bay Cooture Road, but the owner information of the land is Eileen and Elizabeth Cooture of Eleven Friar Road. I emailed you earlier this evening, a copy of the plan a few people saw. It's relatively identical almost to the plan we approved four weeks ago or so for the same applicant for a small parcel that was just being added to one of their neighbors parcels. There's no new lot created. There's no frontage. It's just a little parcel here, but we have. Is it Bob Doyle?
No, Mark Anis.
Mark Anis. Okay. So Mark Anis from Heritage Surveys, just to give us a description of that. A and R.
It's a parcel of 4,642 square feet that will be conveyed from the Cootures to the Sears, leaving the Cootures with 74,152 square feet, which is sufficient area to satisfy current zoning requirements. And I believe the current zoning in that area is 40,000 square feet for the lot.
Mm hmm. Yep.
So we can't touch their frontage because right now their frontage does not conform. It's grandfathered in. So.
So this is a case as it was four weeks ago or so with the Bowers, I believe that were there that just wanted to extend their backyards a little bit?
Correct. Correct. Jackie wants to save some trees that are out her looking out her kitchen window. She wants to save some trees and maintain the trees. So.
Are you representing that there is? There are some issues to be resolved between the owner and seller? I mean, the seller and the buyer?
No. No issues.
Trees are not part of our purview. Appreciate trees very much.
Right, but Jackie would like to own the trees so she has control of the trees.
Interesting. I'm not a lawyer and I'm not the chair, but through Paul seems to me that would be strictly between the parties. Yep. Mark, any questions from you?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. I looked at a plan and application earlier.
Seeing as there are no other issues, can I ask for a motion to endorse this application?
I'll make a motion that we endorse the application for the A and R plan that was submitted for tonight. For the Cootures.
That would be for Eileen and Elizabeth Cooture. Mayor, a second?
Yes.
The motion is made in second. If there's no other further questions on favor, aye. Mark?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay. Mark, I, the plans are at Town Hall.
Okay.
I'll sign them for you and I'll drop them off at your office tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right.
Bye.
Good seeing you, Mark. Bye.
Bye.
All right, there's no other business of although Stephen has a report to make than unless Mark, you have anything, Mark?
No, I don't think so. Nothing new in particular.
But Stephen has a report. I assume you.
Not to put Mark on the spot, but I missed an Open Space Committee meeting, so I'm very embarrassed. I can't report on that. Do you know what happened last month? I was unable to attend that meeting as well, so I do not can't report on what occurred at that meeting.
Actually, that meeting, as far as I know, because I was unable to make it. I was out of town. I think it was canceled.
It may have been. I thought maybe. Less than a quorum.
Yeah, push it off to a doomed fourth or something like that, but.
The follow up is tomorrow night. So my report from the Open Space Committee is we should all show up tomorrow night.
Is that for open space or? Planning Board related or?
Well, it's Planning Board related in that the three of us all sit on the Open Space Committee and that's a curious fact, but I just put it out there for your organization. That is not the update that I was principally requesting for tonight. What I wanted to do is report from the Housing Authority and more particularly the Ad hoc Grants Committee, who met with Ty and Bond over the scope, the geographic scope of the sewer feasibility study. So Paul, if you could put up the screen that I sent you or allow me to screen share.
Uh, let me see here.
Uh, it looks like I may have that already.
How was that?
What was that? That's what I wanted to show you.
I don't know how I did it, but I did it.
Nice job, Dave. Oh.
Well, good, good job. So what we're talking about is a proposal that I solicited from Ty and Bond, really on our chair's suggestion. He asked a question, what about have we a reluctant running a sewer line through the Greenway? This is old news. I took the bit in my mouth. Ty and Bond gave us roughly $30,000 proposal to look at this area plus where our municipal buildings sit at the end of East Street. When the Ad hoc Grants Committee met to discuss this with Ty and Bond, they said see in the pants after doing a lot of looking at data and having their sewer specialists on board. It's unlikely to be cost beneficial to go down to East Street. Notwithstanding the fact that we have municipal buildings and other problematic septic situations on Clark Street and East Street, upgrading it from the Greenway and East Street will be rebuilt in a discreet amount of time. Nonetheless, cost benefit doesn't look good. So we spent a lot of time at Hock Grants Committee with both Alex Fagnol and Joe P., the sewer guy, looking at this map. And so this is what I want to share with you. Housing Authority agreed not to look at East Street. And the Housing Authority said, we still want to understand what's going on in the Red Rock Plaza Big Y area. So the scope would delete the municipal East Street portion. It would document the current conditions at Red Rock, Big Y, Tractor Supply, et cetera, which are already plumbed individually into the East Hampton sewer. Pretty much that whole area, everybody's got some kind of a two inch pipe. And I think we heard this from Paul F. last time we met. So in terms of our supporting the Housing Authority and our own initiative to move forward with sewer, which is really prerequisite for doing a 40R smart growth overlay. That's for the future. I'm happy to present on that too. There's a really wonderful slideshow put out by Mrs. Chappa or the state agency and in 20 minutes you can really get a grasp on 40R because I'm not sure that our Housing Authority does. And I'd love to do a joint learning with Housing Authority and Planning Board, maybe others. Anyway, let's turn to the map and I'm going to try and get done here. What we were talking about primarily is providing for the maximum flexibility of the use of the town's acquisition. Approved at town meeting, but still pending town election for the Prop 2 and a half override. 2.2 million for these two parcels plus this on the other side of the Greenway, which could only be conservation land. It's really lovely, important, but not for our conversation. The 40R district would end at the railroad line and it would come up the property line that we would talk about that is the acquisition we're talking about. Run along Route 10, Gun Road Extension, Palmeroy Meadow and back on I'm not sure which is Palmeroy Meadow Extension, but these are the roadways. And then what I propose and the questions posed by Ty and Bond that I want to see if we can resolve tonight. I've labeled this the proposed sewer district. I had scrolling, but now the Zoom's interfering with my moving things. Whatever. You see this red band here and this red band here and this red triangle here and triangle here. What I propose to Ty and Bond is with this blue purple line running in established roadways or along property lines. Including here, that is a property personal line. The idea is that it would include properties that front on these named streets. It would include these parcels. Not all of this because they're questioning the subdivision roads, which are much more recent than so the frontage houses older down to the Palmeroy Meadow and Route 10 College Highway intersection. This is the party rentals and this is the cemetery. This is the is it a church or is it a diner? I don't know. They and okay, all of this would be included, not so much. And I think they got a little exuberant on the south end because we would want to, although this is newer subdivision, it's just really obvious to include those parcels, but we would want to be aware of the fact that grindstone would be perhaps in the butter on this side of the road. And we don't want them to be subject to unreasonable assessments per sewer that they won't use. And that's the same issue with the Fletcher farmland here. There are many, many other issues when we get to site planning. But if the sewer district were to include this property by maybe running down Gun Road to the Manhan River and Greenway there. I believe that we would end up assessing that forever preserved farmland based on the frontage, which now has sewer, which they will never, ever, ever utilize. And that would be through a betterment assessment, which is why I did not run the district down Gun Row, but pulled it back to the property line at that northeastern edge. These are my emerging thoughts, and this is what I really wanted to get your creative juices going about. Ty and Bond really wants to present a revised cost assessment to the Ad hoc Grants Committee, which meets tomorrow. Chris, Chair Chris of the Select Board has identified ARPA funds that could get this thing going. And I just wanted your thoughts. I'm soliciting the same from any board that could possibly give us thoughts or questions. Ty and Bond has been insanely collaborative. You've had experience with Alex, I'm sure. Joe is as helpful and more detail oriented on the sewer. So this is very hot. As I said, the Ad hoc Grants Committee reviewed this in real time with Ty and Bond. The Housing Authority said they're okay, leaving out East Street. And what about Red Rocks? What we know and how I would interpret that for the scope is assess current conditions because what we need to see is cost benefit to the town. And if those commercial properties are already served through East Hampton, I'm not sure we need to do that much more to improve their, their situation in the short term. This would be the focus in, in, in my opinion, but I want to yield floor.
I got a, I got a question. The main, main reason this was triggered was because of the 40R we brought up. So.
Yeah. No, I would say it's the town's purchase of 117, 125.
Well, yeah, that too. But I mean, as for Planning Board business, the 40R is what we're concerned with. The, this, the safety complex and the land acquisitions, that really isn't our purview. We, for Planning Board purposes, this came up because of 40R. So what I'm trying to get clear in my mind is you're saying that there is no, there's no there's already access to sewage from East Hampton for the previous study that was done that was from Red Rock Plaza on both sides of the road down to not quite as far as the Manhan River on, on College Highway. So, so that's doable in that district right now, correct?
What I believe to be the case through Mark F. Is that they're all using East Hampton sewer. The, what must be cross-country sewer easements. They get to East Hampton to that terminus. I don't understand it in detail. If it were to be further developed, for instance, in a mixed use 40R capacity, they surely would need to upgrade. But and my gut instinct is there's not a lot of potential there. When Sierra from the Housing Authority talks about adding a second story apartments to Red Rock Commercial Plaza, that in no way will meet the 40R requirements. That is a drop in the bucket. So they're all served. They would all need to upgrade, but they have perhaps easements and connection point. And they should be filled figured in volumetrically, but I I'm stretched to see that we have, and this is the key for getting the 40R approved, an opportunity to significantly increase the number of housing units produced.
Yeah, but also remember too, remember too, that, that, that's a commercial corridor too. So the sewer would be important for the commercial aspect of that person of the highway. If they don't, if they don't want to do 40R there, then it's the commercial aspect would be viable.
That's correct. And I think volumetrically that needs to be looked at because let's say the Harley thing transformed from a dealership with six staff and one bathroom to a more intensive mixed use development. Jesus, it could be 100 units of housing on that site. They would obviously need to upgrade from, and this may be the exception, Harley may not have utilized, but I heard generally, everybody has two inch pipe running cross-country to East Hampton. They'd have to deal with that, but they have something established to build off of in contrast to what we're proposing. And I, you know, we can go back and forth and maybe we need to up the scope of analysis for the Red Rock Big Y Plaza. Housing Authority is uh, that's their original focus, but with the purchase of 117 to 125, that parcel and its affordable housing opportunities, I think will generate public funding for the sewer in order of magnitude greater than we could expect otherwise. So the 40R really leverages the sewer. The 40R is dependent on the highly suitable features plus the additive units beyond what the current zoning allows. And this is highly built, but we should look at, you know, how much do we want and can we accommodate here given sewer? And what would it look like to put sewer here and allow some more flexible housing, uh, zoning requirements for first time ownership? That's another thing that's supported in 40R, but I'm not ready to do discourse on 40R. I would, Mr. Chair, like to reserve time on our next agenda to run that slideshow. But I have extracted from the application highly suitable features that help you qualify for 40R district. Fundamental is affordable house. Variety of new opportunities, identity, affordable house. But beyond that.
So your plan.
Transit, transit is number one. We can't offer transit. We could offer with this boundary, things that they enumerate, public school, pedestrian infrastructure existing on Route 10 and contracted to be improved along Palmeroy Meadow and the Greenway.
All right. So let me, let me go with this.
Post office, the public safety complex and a major intersection that is community defining. All of those are cited in the 40R criteria. Yes, sir.
What? All right. So Ty and Bond did this. And that's work that they accomplished. Had, had you met with East Hampton yet about their availability of being on board with this?
Right. So, Mr. Chair, I really appreciate your preparing a letter to the town of South, or East Hampton about expanding our access to their sewer. I do in fact have an appointment with Mayor Nicole. And I'm trying to navigate to my calendar. It doesn't want to show me my schedule. I believe it's on the 21st of this month. Scott and I, Town Administrator and I would be meeting with Mayor Nicole to thank them for their past collaboration with our town. Water supply, Manhan Aqua for Protection, limited connections up in the Red Rock Big Y area. And we're looking at opportunities for expanding public safety dispatch enormously important to the town. So all of this, we want to build on with a sewer feasibility proposal. So what, Mark, what Scott and I would hope to do with Mayor Nicole is to identify whether it's a director of public works, sewer division, what have you, and to introduce our relevant person, probably Brett, to work with Ty and Bond and detail out the issues.
Now with Paul, Paul drafted the letter and he had it, he had it to the attention of Greg Nettelman, who's the Department of Public Works, but.
Just suggest we hold that and share it with the mayor. And if that's the correct person.
Well, don't you, don't you think that he should be invited to this meeting with you and the Town Administrator since he's running the plant?
Potentially. That begs adding Brett to the meeting and making it rather big and more apt to get bound up in detail rather than general direction. What we'd like to do is confirm on East Hampton's side if that's the right point of contact or whether it's his department head below him.
How, how would the mayor be able to know what the sewer system is able to maintain and take on?
Mayor would know, the mayor would know who on her staff is the appropriate person.
And, and according to Paul Fergal, who has dealt with that department in that town over the years with engineering, that's, that's his, his recommendation. That's why he had it addressed to him.
Not, I do not in any way impugn Paul's judgment on that. I'm talking to you about strategy and engagement and whether it is worthwhile at a very high level with the new town administrator introduced to the outgoing mayor to tee up this and any number of other collaborative efforts. But this one quite specifically and is very timely and important. And give her some ownership of it, saying, yes, this is my person on that task. Or you know what? We've had some things going on and I would like to bring this other person into this conversation and you should bring your person Brett or whomever it is. That, that is a high level introduction meeting rather than the detail level meeting, which I think Paul did a great job teeing up. And, you know, I, we could bring that draft letter. There's nothing wrong with that draft letter. Except I would identify our contact person to respond. Right? Because I think that's what it did not include whether, Paul, I don't think that you as volunteers should take this on. It should be Brett or Scott or somebody.
Well, I'm not going to send the letter because if you're, if you're meeting with the mayor, then as far as I'm concerned, the letter is moot until you get a decision on what the mayor says, and then we can go forward after that. Because that was the last thing we, we had agreed upon not knowing about this meeting you were supposed to have. So I'm going to hold on to that letter.
That's great. That doesn't hurt anything.
Nope. And as far as the rest of it, and as far as the rest of it goes, I don't, I don't think we should go any further with this without adopting a plan of how we're going to approach this 40R now without the consent and the opinion of Richard Harris. Because now that study probably will have to be redone for the new section of town that this encompasses.
And yeah, I anticipate that. And I think between what Ty and Bond will develop in the sewer feasibility study and what I can bring, we can count up what's there current, what additional opportunity there is under current zoning and what the differential would be under 40R. You know, I, I can, I can give 10 hours to everyone we buy from Richard. Maybe Mark can give us an hour or two and we can sort this out. Maybe Mark can give us an hour or two and we can sort this out. This is complex, but it's not brain surgery.
Well, if you read Richard's letter, the first.
Yes, I did.
The first item to address was the sewer. So once we get that confirmed, then we can proceed with the rest of the plan for 40R. So that's, that's what he laid out in the criteria and that's what we have to abide by.
We are the authority, he is a consultant, but Paul, I really, I don't mean to quibble. I mean to agree with you that this is the step we are taking with the mayor and with her identified uh contact person. Because sewer is fundamental to a 40R application. But I don't want us to walk blindly forward.
Once you get a final answer or you get some definitive answers in, in writing, then I think we'll proceed, but right now it seems to me like it's, it's really uh, it's scratching the surface right now about all the work that has to be done on the, the Ty and Bond study. I, I don't want this committee to get involved in, in more than it can handle outside of 40R right now because it's a big scope of a project. Uh putting town sewer uh in all these areas is not the planning board um to decide that. It's whether the town's got money and the grant to do it. Town wishes to go forward with it, then fine with us.
Um I, I hear your perspective, Mr. Chair. We are proceeding to get East Hampton's explicit commitment to work with us on sewer expansion. We are only at a feasibility study level with Ty and Bond. It will provide invaluable information to support a potential 40R nomination going forward. At the next meeting, I would like to present uh one of, one of the standard slideshows about 40R so we can get our heads around it and begin to educate ourselves about where this town's opportunities lie. And I will work with Richard, I will work with Mark, I will work with anybody who wants to contribute intelligently uh to this conversation.
You know, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm looking at the sewer, I've done a lot of sewer lines, sewer line studies and and I'm looking from East Hampton's perspective, you know, what is the benefit? They obviously, they're not going to pay for a structure, a sewer on South Haven property. And typically the revenue a sewer uh commission gets is uh the flows generated to them.
Right.
And um, you know, uh and typically, you know, if unless there's something wrong with your Title V system, you can't mandate somebody abandon their Title V, I mean, a huge expense for a town and inconvenience for a town. And I mean, for most of these properties, you have these red lines, they're, you know, they're residential areas which will not be putting into a sewer district. Uh maybe they don't want it, you know, and uh and it seems the whole reason to get this, all of this blue line and red lines, et cetera, was basically to get a sewer line into a, a 145 um, um, you know, College Highway where the public safety building is, seemed like that. Yeah, it seemed like a whole lot, you know, and I, I know, having a tissue it, but in typically most of sewer things, I think there's been a desire, I mean, big, the requirement and for improvement to a failed septic system, sewer systems falling apart, the Title V systems are all failing. And so there's a desire, you know, a dire need for it. This sure seemed like the dire need is to provide, you know, a small section of our community with 40R district. And it's a lot of sewer, a lot of construction, a lot of changing property values and, you know, and I just look at the sewer, forget the 40R, just look at it. Does it make sense to put sewer where we're putting it and why, why is it being put there other than 40R? You know, what's the evaluation?
This is a fea- this is a feasibility study that will look at how much built stuff is there? How much redevelopment potential is there under current zoning? How much would be there under 40R? And we could amend this and we could also, seriously, I, I can't imagine the sewer would be built out in less than two or perhaps three phases, starting with Route 10 to serve the town's property and the failed systems of multifamily and commercial properties along Route 10. The next piece of Gun Road and Pomeroy Meadow brings in a lot of the attributes to help us win the designation and get a bunch of state income even before we build these units. So the 40R district, we might scooch down. The sewer proposal, we might look at phasing it in N phases. I don't know, because I'm not a sewer guy, but in terms of what um in all of town, where we have the densest development that needs a lifeline and we have a blank slate of 45 acres and we need sewer. I, if, this is the start for getting a handle on, you know, what does the south side of Route 10 cost? What does the north side of Route 10 cost? And whatever questions we still want them to address with Red Rocks and Big Y. But if we don't include a bunch of affordable housing in a zoning change, and it could be as small, as big as 45 acres that we have, um, that may work. That might leverage the sewer investment from another direction, but it would perhaps suffice for a 40R. I look forward to working with Richard. This is what I studied in school and I went a different direction. I did conservation and development that was necessary to accomplish that. Um I really do understand zoning and infrastructure. I have not the depth of practice that Mark has, but maybe I've had more experience with creative partners that do the impossible.
I'm su- I'm sure of that. I, what I want is an orderly fashion and not to bite off more than we can chew here when we, we go um from a 40R concept that was right along for years was just the College Highway corridor. And now with the public safety complex that is in that same corridor. But now all these other outlying areas there, I, I, I don't want to focus on anything outlying other than what is concerned with 40R right, right at the moment. And that's why I think it's got to be organized and prioritized. Um because the committee that you're on, if it's an ad hoc grant committee or feasibility study, I don't know who's on that committee or whatever else, but um.
Well, Paul, you look at the town website and learn that it's chaired by the Chair of the Select Board.
I, I don't often go on the town website to check out who's on what, I'm just asking.
I'm, I'm trying to enhance cross-board communication and if it's undesired, we'll take it one step. Uh, Mr. Chair, I would request time on the next meeting to present a 10 minute slideshow about 40R that we can better wrap our arms around that. And I would um make a motion to table discussion of this because the planning board is expressing through its chair, it's not ready to contemplate a sewer feasibility study separate from a 40R application, but undoubtedly instrumental to it. So if you can't get behind a sewer feasibility study, I move table it. It was not actually teed up for a vote. Your input says you don't support this and you really only want to look at 40R. And in that regard, I request.
Isn't the, isn't the feasibility study part of 40R? Then how am I applying that? It is, of course it is. The feasibility study, it's all about sewer, isn't it? Isn't, isn't the 40R about sewer and the feasibility is about sewer? How can they be not connected?
Connected, yes. The 40R is about affordable mixed use zoning.
All right.
It's not inherently.
On this presentation you want to make for 40R, um, I am assuming you want Housing Authority to be invited to that meeting as well.
That would be ideal, thank you.
Right.
And Public Safety Building Committee and Senior Center Building Committee. A joint boards and if, Mr. Chair, you want the Select Board to organize that? That's fine, but we need to move forward with this contract with Ty and Bond. I don't think there's anything here that is impeding a fresh, open look at how we apply, how we um propose 40R.
Uh how can, how can I uh move this forward with you, Mark and I? Do we endorse this feasibility study? Because I, I had no idea that, you know, you're, you're uh, you're making a report this in depth. But are you looking for our endorsement? Because I don't want to hold up your, your study, but I just, I just want to take piecemeal what we have to deal with.
I have heard clearly your concerns. I wanted your input. Your concerns are that this is perhaps bigger than a 40R district. It's perhaps bigger than the town can afford. We haven't done sufficient background on 40R. I haven't heard that this area of town doesn't merit sewer.
Why, why wouldn't it merit sewer if the public safety complex is going to be there?
I mean, the public safety complex's site can accommodate some of the sanitary issues associated with the public safety.
But, but not the, but not all the, the expansion and the possibilities for the site.
In particular, the affordable housing aspirations.
Right. And possibly the senior center, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
It is an open question, but there's still um tentative. I met with them today. Paul, Paul, I'm retired. I'm working on this and I want you to understand that however much time it takes, I will tee up questions for you to answer, deliberate answer, vote, whatever the process is. Right now, I don't think you're on board with a sewer feasibility study. That's not necessary.
You're, you're, you're reading this wrong. I, I'm for the feasibility study, but I'm not for this big picture for us to handle all at once. I only want what we can handle as a board going forward piecemeal, not, not a big scope. If 40R is our focus right now, it has been, uh, from what the past meetings have told me, that's what I want to focus on, nothing else.
And that's what I'm.
But I am in favor of the entire feasibility, go for it.
Okay, and, and so what I'm requesting with respect to 40R is, well, Housing Authority is the key one. We should schedule next meeting joint with them and go through a slideshow. Use the stuff that CHAPA and the state agencies have given us because the way it's been discussed casually in this group and others, it doesn't really bear much resemblance to what Richard Harris has done in South Hadley. And we need to make sure we're in the parameters of state law.
That's why I want him on board with us.
Pretty attentive next meeting.
I will ask.
Would you allow me to speak with him in advance?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I, I want to get, get this going, but he's, his, his question number one was get the affirmative from East Hampton before we go any further. That was his number one uh point that he'd made. And I don't see any, anything in black and white that confirms that.
Wow, you're right, I hear you. Meeting with Mayor LaChapelle is on 29th. Um Scott and I, and maybe we should to bring Brett, make the introductions and get this thing launched. Uh Paul, I, I appreciate your desire for certainty, but in the real world, certainty doesn't really exist. And this is going to be a negotiated uh agreement with East Hampton. What we want is the highest level of buy-in that they will um in good faith engage in what is, you know, an open-ended exploration with a lot of questions. They have a line in Main Street, East Hampton calls it Main Street. They have a line in their rail trail. They have a certain amount of load on, they have a certain expectation of future load. Some of the current load is East Hampton. What of the remaining load will they allocate to us? You know, i- i- we are not doing brain surgery. All they can do is say, we're inclined to work with you, but it all will come down to the engineering study of what we can accommodate. Would they charge us use their fees plus want us to engage in a capital improvement plan? I think that would be a reasonable part of the discussion, but that is well down the line. Is it expensive? It is crazy expensive. Is this affordable housing, 117, 125, how's the College Highway? Our best play to leverage maximum public funds for sewer extension to serve our economic development and our housing development? Can't imagine anything better. And I will give you professional level services because I have no light, let me do it. All I want is 10 minutes on the next agenda with the Housing Authority. Can we agree to that?
We can, and if, it sounds like there's a lot of, you just mentioned so many variables about this, this, this sewer, then how, how can we proceed with 40R without any kinds of I'm not going to say guarantees, but any kind of solid information that this can be pulled off? How, how can you even start the process?
It'll take a year doing our homework to build the application. We need to read the application and understand the program.
All right, June 5th. I'll get ahold of Richard, I will invite the Housing Authority. And we'll go from there.
June 5th it is?
June 5th.
That's a Wednesday?
It's the first meeting of, uh, first Wednesday of, of June, yes.
I'll cancel my vacation, but that's what I will do for you.
Well, if you want to, if you want to put it off to the second meeting, say so. You want, you wanted to get this underway, so it's either the 5th or the 19th.
You know, I'll work with the Housing Authority and with Richard so that I can come back to you, Paul, uh, with a really crisp educational piece uh about 40R, because we need it.
That's what we said back in 2012. It went nowhere from there, so hopefully.
We really wrapped our arms around the program.
No, I know it, so maybe this time we'll get serious.
I hope so.
Is there any other uh reports of committees or other business we'd like to be mentioned?
Um, no, I'm, I'm with the uh Community Preservation Act, so there's nothing unique associated with that.
What was that, Mark? I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm on the lines on for a community preservation, so I didn't think there was any, any uh pertinent issues.
Oh, I got you.
Um, not at present, but when we figure out what kind of a housing program we can do here, uh, we'll certainly be back to housing preservation, but um that's a year from now? Certainly six months from now.
Yeah.
But I mean, I, with Housing Authority, we've reached out to Wayfinders, uh, to their CEO and their senior. to their CEO and their senior staff, and we have a site visit scheduled. So, uh, you know, we do have nonprofit housing developers who are interested in what we're doing and will come and yeah, kick the tires with us, do a site walk, meet people and tell us what kinds of uh funding opportunities and, and emerging housing development projects they're working on that we can choose from menu that is feasible rather than the menu on the side of our imagination.
All right, anything else?
No, I think I'm good.
All right, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that.
Motion made by Stephen. Second?
I'll second it.
Mark, on favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, Stephen.
All right, looking forward to getting the guys together. Get together, guys.
Thank you all and Stephen.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.